They approved the October 11, 2018 regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous planning commission meeting minutes.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ed, any reports and correspondence?
Just real quick, I want to, when we reorganized in January, we had the December Planning Commission meeting moved to December 12, Wednesday, not second Thursday, just want to confirm that we want to keep it there. Some conflict that you had?
Oh yeah, it's right.
So, the next meeting will be December 12, Wednesday?
Appreciate that.
Is that a problem?
Yeah.
Keep it there?
Yeah, that's okay with everybody here.
Okay.
I think it should be.
We rescheduled at the beginning of the year, remember that, right?
Yeah, we changed to February, March, and December.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Other than that, that's it.
Can you just remind your assistant to tell, just so our members? Okay, any site plan subdivisions filed for review?
Two, Tracy Final Subdivision Plan, it's a one lot subdivision on Country Group Drive, and the other one is LaSanti Subdivision Plan Number One, a one lot subdivision off of Turkey Foot Road.
Any changes to the agenda, Ed?
Yeah.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Please come up.
How are you all this evening? My name is Ryan Jurowski, I'm the Assistant Manager here at Peters Township, thank you all for having me, Ed, thank you for the invitation tonight. My short time, I've been in Peters Township two years, one of the things that's been most impressive is not only the talent we have on our boards, but the, and expertise, but also the energy and enthusiasm for people to volunteer for those boards. Here at Planning Commission, you've always had a great resource, in Ed, now in Seth, but one of the things we as the administration have not done well to this point is to help all of our boards, all of our commissions understand where they fit in the structure of Peters Township government, what their role is, and what are some of their duties and limitations of their power. That's been rectified recently, Paul Lauer put together the Board and Commission Handbook that you see before you tonight, its purpose is really severalfold, to help members, like I said, understand your role in Peters Township government, where you fit in in terms of the entirety of the township's organization, provide information on how each committee functions, this is more redundant for all of you, as you've been together for some time now, information on state and local laws that govern your work, municipalities' planning code in your place specifically, and probably most importantly, provide a code of conduct for members in terms of your interactions here when you are in session, when you're out in the community, and interactions with the staff as well. We're going around every board, Paul and I, we're splitting them up, luckily for you, you get me, the zoning hearing board gets Paul, and we're just providing this to each of you, please review it, if you have any questions, if you need to talk about anything you see in there, I would encourage you all to reach out to me, so.
Any questions, Ryan? Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks for putting it together.
And Paul? Okay, any other audience comments? Moving on to new business, Planning Commission recommendation, final plan Lawson Re subdivision, McCallan Road.
Richard and Deborah Lawson, husband and wife, and their daughter Tracy Lawson own two adjoining properties, they total approximately 10 acres, they're located off McCallan Road. The Lawson subdivision plan is, doesn't create any new lots, it's a simple re subdivision. Currently, this is Richard and Deborah Lawson's lot, and then this is the border between Peters and Union Township, this is McCallan Road here, so the lot line is the actual border, believe it or not, and this is Tracy's lot. The subdivision plan, we have that, shifts this lot line from the border to a more perpendicular line to McCallan Road, the lot sizes pretty much stay the same, it's a simple re subdivision, taking this line and eliminating it, has a lot line and creating a new lot line here. This is, this will be Tracy's lot, which is four plus acres, and then this is Richard and Deborah Lawson's lot. So staff's recommending that we approve the plan, a simple re subdivision, subject to those three conditions listed in my report, doesn't create any new lots, it's a simple re subdivision.
Where did the houses sit?
Houses here. With that, one house, Tracy's house is in Peters, Richard and Deborah's house is in Union, now that won't change.
So that's staying, the houses are staying in the township that they started in?
Correct. So, and this is a recommendation to council, this plan will go to council sometime here in maybe the end of November.
What's your comment? Any audience comments? Okay, get a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation, approve the recommendation to council for the Lawson re subdivision, as detailed in the Planning Commission memo dated November 1st, 2018, subject to the three conditions there.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Planning Commission approval for Confluence Financial Partners Site Plan.
This is a site plan, so this is a Planning Commission approval, this plan does not move any further on the council. The applicant's consultants are here tonight, and I'm just going, I'm gonna let them walk the Planning Commission and the audience through their proposed plan, I'm just gonna hit some key points here. The property that we're dealing with here is at the intersection of Bee Mountain Road, East McMurray, Thompsonville, it's the site currently being used by Just About Kids. The property is zoned, mixed use activity two, MA2, and the proposed use is professional office space, the proposed tenant is Confluence Financial Partners, that's a company that's owned by a Peters Township president, and he wants to move his headquarters here into Peters, and they're currently located in South Point. I want to hit some key points, I'll let them get into site access and stormwater management. One thing I do want to point out is that this project is not subject to traffic impact fees, the daycare center actually generates a lot more traffic than this office building, so there will be no traffic impact fee. So staff's recommending that the Planning Commission approve the plan, subject to those 12 conditions in my report, and we can adjust those, we can amend those after we hear the presentation by their consultants.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Marshman, I'm the Civil Engineering Project, here with us tonight is law officer, he's the engineer, did most of the technical work on it honestly, and we got the architect, as well as a representative of the owner of the property here as well. I'll flip through a couple slides here, Seth, if you'll help me out, the existing conditions plan, you could see pretty well from the satellite photo, this plan right here is the existing conditions plan, we've got the building that's there right now, we've got the loop drive, drive around entrance, the governor's drive if you will, the parking lot around it, there's the playground area right here. Features on this existing site that I want to point out before we get into our development plan, existing driveways, there's two existing driveways with permits on the state roads, we're keeping those the same, we don't want to have to mess with that, so we kept those access points as is, designed our site within to make that work. There's also existing stormwater management on this site, this had an underground detention system in it, we have left what we could, but really provided a brand-new system altogether, and I'll talk about that on the plan a little bit later here. The site has existing, mentioned access, existing utilities, existing stormwater, existing HOP, so it's a really good candidate for what we'll call redevelopment, this into a new use. If you'll flip, Seth, if you don't mind, to the site plan drawing, so this plan should give a good illustration of the general zoning parameters of the properties, their parking layout, the building layout, in real small print down here on the screen, but you should be able to read it on your plan as a zoning table, where we've laid out all of the requirements out of zoning board, the number of parking spaces, the setbacks required, buffer areas, landscaping, et cetera, to show specifically this layout and these requirements. I'll point out a couple things on this plan, the parking spaces, you can see pretty good the layout here, we kept a lot of the access and circulation the same, of course, the governor's drive is gone, we did that for this layout. One of the things I would point out, on the backside of the property, we're holding that same line, existing pavement's there right now, we're gonna reconstruct it, and our new pavement is gonna be right on that existing line. To the right of the property, the existing pavement is out here right now, in order to get the buffers that we need, we're actually moving that back about 10 feet, so there'll be about 10 feet more green space to the right of our property after we build a new parking lot. Trash enclosure located in the rear corner, we've got a lighting plan you see in your packet, so there's light poles, LED, fully shielded lighting throughout the site, we've got a photometric plan for you to show that we meet the ordinance requirements. Approximately 9,000 total square feet, for 4,000, and some changes, the footprint building, two stories. We've got sidewalks around, around the building all together, around, all the way around the thing, we've got a public courtyard out front, we've got sidewalks that are proposed to be extended along the road fringes. There's a sidewalk shown on the plans up here, I'll talk about that a little bit. At the recommendation of the township planning department, we're gonna hold off on instructing that, and instead, our sidewalk's gonna circulate through, the reason being Pendott has an intersection plan that's in the works, and so we've proposed some modifications to this area to leave enough room for that to be filled without an issue.
Is it for a right turn, right turn lane, there or something?
Based on their layout, they don't, I don't know if it's a right turn lane, there's not a lot of white lanes proposed, but they had some grading shown in this area.
We'll pop it up here real quick.
Yeah, that was maybe my question, was Pendott's plan?
I thought we had it.
Well, the concepts we've seen, and what we've used to, the layout our design involved a, about a 10-foot more right away that they need along here. Now what they do within that right away, that's up to them, regardless, we saw no point in building sidewalk in an area that we know cannot work without anything. So as a trade-off, in order to provide pedestrian access through, this sidewalk is gonna continue the idea, I think you'll see that in more confident conditions of approval tonight. I want to point out this line right here, this is a retaining wall, we're proposing 120-foot in length retaining wall from one end to the other, we're asking the Planning Commission for a allowance to go six and a half feet tall for about 30 to 40-foot section right here. So this is a retaining wall, reason for that being, the road climbs up here, this entrance is low, this entrance is low, in order to get a site that really works for cars and traffic and pedestrians, and a flat footprint around the building, this retaining wall was laid in right here, we got a, this is a patio outside courtyard area, would be the aesthetic front of the building. Stormwater management, I'll talk about that a little bit, so we've got inlets spaced around the property, we've got an underground, basically an oversized underground detention pipe that's been designed with a routed outlet structure right here, and ultimately that flows through, then the existing tank, which is gonna stay out here in the grass area, ultimately discharges through what is a rain garden, a level spreader right here. Now, the stormwater system is sized to meet the ordinance's requirements as far as volume rate control, et cetera. One of the things we are going to add to the plan is to, as you clean out this rain garden, it's a little bit overgrown and muddy and swampy, so that's one of the conditions the planning department asks for, that we clean that up, so we'll be doing that, as well as coordination to get a rain box upgrade just on the other side of this line, so that this is proper, but I believe we've got all that worked out and designed into the plan and plan arrangement. And then some utilities, we've got water vaults right here for, the building will be sprinklered, so there's a hydrant shown right here, we'll have a fire department connection, and of course that's our water vault right here. Other equipments, we've got HVAC equipment tucked in back here, we got some landscaping, a transformer pad here, but again, we'll be screening around it. I'd like to flip to the landscaping plan next, okay, this is, let me go back to that one, now this is gonna change a little bit, flip to the retaining wall plan, if you don't mind, there we go. So this is an elevation view of how that wall's gonna go from left to right, left would be here, if you're facing that wall over that way, so this is the area, we've got about 30 to 40 feet where it's gonna be six and a half feet tall.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Can you talk about the materials of that retaining wall, please?
Materials of the retaining wall, so this will be cast in place, poured in place retaining wall, so our structural engineer, a couple things to consider about building this wall, in order to build it as simply as possible, also without any risk to the roadway, which is 15 feet away from the wall, the wall's gonna be a cast-in-place wall with a toe foundation, so the structural support of the wall, or the toe of the wall will be subgrade at the front of it to resist overturning load, rather than you might see a wall with a heel design, where the heels buried under the dirt. So the idea would be, for this wall in particular, the only excavation needed would be to set the formwork at the rear of the wall, and then the toe of the foundation would be towards the building, cast-in-place wall. Original idea was we wanted to do a bursalock or keystone wall, but those walls, when you get up six, eight feet tall, you start to have to do, I've greased my backs into the hillside, and we could probably do it, but we didn't want the risk of the Pendott project or somebody else, or a whitening the road, or whatever, impacting that wall, so instead it's gonna be cast-in-place, I know they're gonna pick some type of aesthetic stamp to the front, so it'll look like natural stone, or whatever it be, folks that dream bigger than I do, would choose.
Jamie, the face of the wall actually faces the building, correct?
That's exactly right, so the face of the wall is on this side, right, so this view is what you would see being down here on the sidewalk in front of the building, road is above six feet, to take it above the grade of the building. What you would see from the road would be the decorative cap of the wall, and then of course you would see the guard railing, there will have, there'll be a decorative railing constructed across the top, so nobody goes over it, and that's what we showed on here conceptually, is the decorative railing, they probably won't step it exactly like that, but yeah.
Is that eight feet?
Eight, so planning has shown eight and a half feet, however, we modified that slightly, given Ed some notes on that, we only need six and a half feet. We've moved some things away from the road a little bit, so the only thing we're asking for is a slight variance to six and a half feet, your ordinance allows six, so we're asking for a little bit more, we tried to get it to six, but it's just not gonna give us that little bit of cap that we need at the top of the wall.
Is that a variance or modification of this?
No variance, it's.
Just a modification?
It's called like a modification.
The guard on top, what type of material is that, because that's really what's gonna be visible from the road?
It will be visible, I'm gonna defer to David, plenty of architect on this, do we have any ideas of what that's gonna look like?
Yeah, basically, it would be a black metal, that'll take the load for requirement for the 42-inch height and the fall protection, so the reed would be like a black iron fence on there, and that's, and it would be continuous along the, you know, the whole plan, the footprint, what you see there.
I understand. Thank you. Is that what's shown in the plans here?
Yes.
Vertical, that picket, right. Yeah, there'll be vertical, we gotta be ANCA 117, vertical 2-inch guard, and so the bursalock picket's gonna be pretty big, from 42 inches tall. I want to show you this plan, because I think it's the prettiest anyway, but this is the landscaping plan, so you can see the buffers that we reserved around the perimeter, so this is a specific planted buffer with trees and shrubs spaced probably around the outside perimeter, this is important to us because you've got houses, you know, behind it, and I wanted to point out the fact that we've got this screening on the right side, we've got an extra 10 feet, we almost there right now, so we're hopeful that that's.
Are there any trees there now?
There, yes.
There's a few on the left side, on the right side.
But around this level, they'd be as large as these, for those trees.
Significant, I hope that we'll keep those in place and just add to the area.
Absolutely, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. So we'll make a note.
Wanted to make a note on them. Do we need to make a note on our?
Yeah, so the, I would like to note on our plans, protect existing trees as much as possible.
Correct.
That would be fine, and I think that would be in our, in two hours.
I think those trees there only show as two-inch caliber, that's a pretty small tree, can we increase that maybe to a four-inch pound?
Well, you probably run into that, and I know this, is they don't survive. Two-inch pound, which is standard grocery stock size for a new aesthetic tree, or shade tree, but three to four inches are harder planting, they don't survive, also they're a lot more expensive, so, I mean, obviously you can ask, I would defer to our client as to whether they have any concerns with it, our recommendation would be to make them survive better, and in another year or two, they're up that size anyway.
Two inches are, okay. For the buffers that you're putting in around the sides there, on the lighting that you're gonna put out, would that kind of hold back some of the glare at the homes?
Well, that's a good point, there shouldn't be any glare in the homes, because they're fully shielded lighting, of course, while they ensure that road trees, trees do a couple things, one, they're gonna help you, sound pavement, noise, graphic, they're also gonna help you from light, any light that you add, headlights or anything like that, trees and trucks, you're gonna protect from that, is that their purpose? I don't know. They'll help, I mean, the light poles in the building plan are gonna be, you know, in here somewhere, can be put in the trees, so they'll be, they'll be 22 feet tall, the full light, the mountain heights of the light poles, so when the trees are about maturity, they'll be 23 feet tall, from the height of the truck right here.
Is there any issue with the trees on top of the stormwater management, you mentioned there's something there now, you're obviously planting more trees, I'm just looking for more.
No, it should be fine, this is just a pipe over here, and it's the old pipe, and we just kept it because it functions, there's no reason to tear it out, it gives us a little extra, a little bit of control on site. The pipe sits right here, and the trees will be planted beside it, it's not a, it's not an infiltration pipe or anything, we could do work about root intrusion or anything like that, our pipes underneath the pavement are the ones that actually perform most of the stormwater management, and those will be the new systems.
Could you just talk quickly about the discharge of that specifically, as it pertains to the property?
Sure. So, the stormwater management plan for the site previously, we tried to stay in concert with that, or to stay consistent with that as much as possible there, the ultimate discharge point is a rain garden, called that, probably just a stormwater pond at the time, but it's functioned similar to a rain garden, because you've got some wet areas that the water can sit in. So there's an end wall right here existing, that discharges into the pond, and there's a level spreader, it's a level spreader, and then ultimately that's received by a small stormwater box just, just across the property line, I believe, so what we've tried to stay consistent with is that level spreader discharge of the site, so the stormwater management controls we're proposing, we will reduce the volume and reduce the rate, even beyond what's there existing, and it's still gonna discharge the same manner, same location. Now, there is a small section of drainage, there's two inlets over here that tie right into the state system, we've, we'll have to reconfigure those two inlets, but the drainage area of those two inlets is less than predeveloped, so we're, in effect, reducing it off in that direction without changing anything other than reducing the drains here. The major point of discharge is, we'll be able to say.
And your storm management account, does that accounts for a 20% reduction in impervious for that, did you obtain that through your site plan design?
Through, well, through the site plan design and stormwater management, if I remember right, the way we did that is, the 20% reduction was achieved as the difference between the daycare center and the office building that were proposed, so the increase in impervious and then 20% of that, so it wasn't as hard as it sounds, because our site was developed beforehand. And that was a scenario that we got approved with Mark Zemitis before we even started, just so we knew what target we were shooting at, because we had an existing plan, existing development, existing stormwater management system, but it didn't meet our current standards, so to try to find a way to deal with that, that was, that was the way we looked at it. Does that make sense?
I think so. So you're basing the meeting today's standards?
Yes.
With a total 20% reduction of what was there with the daycare?
Exactly.
And I want to point out one thing, there is a small, I'll call it a yard drain on the neighbor's property that we have gotten the developer to agree to upsize with your permission, and we were gonna work that out after we got through this approval process. That'll, that'll help that, you call it a rain garden, rain better, you said it won't be a wet spot there, because you're asking.
There's a little cat tip in that corner, too.
You can clean it out, it's part of a stormwater facility.
Thank you, that's right, so our developers, there's no problem, we'll replace that box on the half the township, and you guys will get a commission, is that your property?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's great, and you can see the rest of the aesthetic plannings and the screening around the transformer, et cetera, on this plan. You got all the high points that I wanted to share with you regarding site planning, infrastructure, zoning, how we met the ordinances, any questions from the commission before I would sit down?
Ed, has Pendott made known when they're gonna do that intersection?
Not when, they haven't let us know when, but it's coming, we don't know if it's gonna be soon, but it's probably a few years down the road. I want to point out though, that, what's the applicant's name there? Dr. James Ventures LLC has been very cooperative with the township, they have designed this site so that that project could proceed without any impact on this development, they've moved everything out of the way, even designing the wall here, designing it is accommodating that future project. And we're gonna go through the architecture now?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Is this a pointer? It says, I read, is the pointer, et cetera?
Hello, I'm Dave McLean, I'm McLean Architects, and this is a rendering of the, of the, one of the longer elevations of the building, this one faces east, which is facing our parking lot, this isn't the McMurray roadside, this is the parking lot side. So, basically, the building has a stone base, up to about three foot four inches off the grade, with a precast cap at the top of that, so the look of a stone cap on the top of that stone base, and then brick is our, is our main building material, and then we've got, as you can see, we've got balcony areas where, basically, this plane actually pushes back a bit from the main brick plane, so we go back there, off of our bearing wall, and we go to a composite panel finish on those locations where that's pushed back like that. So we've got our three main building materials of stone, brick, and then the composite panel material, and then the roof is a, is a gable, continuous ridge, and that's actual slate, we're gonna use real slate as our roof material. So, the interest in our clients is in actual real material, so we're designing with real stone, actually, you know, obviously, brick, and then real slate as the roof material. So we can go to the next slide.
Do we get some materials or exterior stairs?
Yeah, yeah, just the outside, yeah, and then the other elevation, this is the south elevation, and it's got the balcony wrapping the upper level, there's a projection on the first floor, so this plane, this, these planes right here are out from this one, so there's a conference room that pushes out of it underneath the balcony, and then, again, we've got our composite metal where we're above the balcony areas, and then you can see the slopes of the roof, and the profile there, and then this is the north face, this would be the face at the corner, when you're on, facing East McMurray and Bee Mountain, and that's our stair tower at the end, this is all glass, and then the profile of the stairs would read through there, so we've got a generous amount of glass, and then on the profile.
So on the right-hand side is where McMurray is, on the bottom one?
On this one, that's right, McMurray would be over here, that's right. You can see how we're implying, how we're going up that, that grade right there.
That's the one facing McMurray, right there?
That's correct. That's right. And you see, we've got a similar profile on the, on the elevation in the front, that balcony that wraps around the south side here, and then a small balcony above the center of, of the building on that side. So this is your McMurray Road elevation here. And as we know, we're gonna have that wall coming up, starting very low right here, coming up along here, and getting over to our six and a half foot height right here. And that's very fortunately where we have the outside HVAC equipment, is right at that spot where we're taking advantage of that wall to tuck them in. There's two pieces of equipment right there. And then again, the, the attractiveness of the building is the fact that we do have a slate roof, sloping roof. We don't have any rooftop equipment and things like that. Our mechanical equipment's in the basement with just a couple of outside pieces that are hidden in that. And then if we look at this space again, this is very similar to the other side, but we've got the, the stone. This is our brick face here. And then right here, you can see we've got these lines coming down here. These are actually the, the line of the downsides as they come down. And when we're up in this profile right here, we actually have timbers that are in that profile of the overhang, and then we follow that line coming back toward the building. And then we have the precast, like a stone panel right here where that, that timber returns to the building right there. So if we can go back one to the side elevations, the, the two, the north and the south one, you can see the profile of those timbers is here. So we bring a, a deep overhang here, then we have a timber that runs along the top edge of that, and then comes down here like that, returns to the building. And that's where, when it hits the brick face of the building, it has that stone medallion that it, that it reports to there. It does a number of things for us. It gives us an aesthetic that we really like. Again, real material, that would be like Douglas fir, actual timber. And it also allows that profile that we need for the gutter and downsides to return to the building. It gives it a physical place to be so that we don't have that metal gutter out in the, in the, in the open where it could be, you know, vulnerable there. So that's, that's the architecture of it. I don't know that there's any others. We don't need interior plans.
I don't think it's necessary.
Quick question, Dave. The railing, could you speak to that material? Because it looks pretty impressive.
Yeah, the railing is a, is a precast, like a permacast, and it's got a traditional newel look to it, you know, like a polyester look to it. And it is continuous top rail. And then at the code, you know, maximum of the porridge openings in there, we've got a, a traditional profile on that. The reed of it will be as though it's like a stone balcony. It'll actually be composite material, though, so that we get, the, keep the weight down.
Nice job. Very nice.
Thank you.
And there is no subfloor below that, correct?
There's actually a basement.
Oh, there is a basement?
Yeah, there is a full basement in the building. It's mechanical for the most part, mechanical and.
The same footprint as the building?
That's right. It does, yeah. There was, there was a point in the design where we were gonna have partial, and then after we did core borings and talked to the geotechnical engineers, by the time we got the differential, you know, designs set up in there, it was, it was as economical just to have a full basement under there.
And is the, the foundation walls, are they poured walls?
Their design is ivy block, so reinforced block. So we've got in there now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any audience comments? Please come upstairs.
Yep.
Introduce yourselves.
Hi. It's nice to see Jeff and Ted and a number of folks that I know. And for those that I don't, I'm Matt Boy. Ed and the commission, thanks for having this hearing each month and an opportunity for the township residents to weigh in. A great presentation, I think, by both the, the engineer and the architect. I live next door to the, the proposed building on the East McMurray roadside. So I'm in the property that's just below in this diagram here. My wife's with me tonight, Leslie, as is my daughter Caitlin. Connor's playing soccer, as you guys can imagine. But, and, and, you know, I think overall, I'll keep my comments short because I know the Steelers kick off before too long, right? But obviously, we have some questions, and I think we have some concerns, some of which I think may be already are addressed by the plans. It would be interesting if someone on the commission would detail out for us the dozen points that are, because we had an opportunity to come down and see the plans in your office, but we didn't get to hear what the 12 requirements are.
Would you do that, Ed? Go ahead, Ed. A lot of them are standard that we do on all new developments. There are agreements that we make to developer signs, stormwater maintenance and site plan improvement agreement. Condition two is that the owners enter into a right-of-way dedication agreement with the township. And what that is, is we're gonna, the developer has agreed to dedicate the right-of-way necessary for the intersection improvements that PennDOT will ultimately need. He has agreed to dedicate that to the township, so we'll hold that when it's needed for PennDOT.
Okay.
He has to provide us his financial capability to carry out this project. He has to lay out his plan so that the PennDOT project can happen without any interference. That's condition four. Condition five is they meet all the requirements of the Peters Township Sanitary Authority prior to issuing a building permit. They have to clean up some items from our township engineer on the plan. So that, that needs to be done before we let them start any site work or get a building permit. We want the retaining wall to, the material of the retaining wall to match and complement the building. We always require, when we're dealing with a commercial site, we reserve the right to require light adjustments to the exterior lighting after their lights are up and in place. If we see problems, if we see light glaring onto the road or into your home, we're gonna make them adjust that.
Okay.
All mechanical equipment needs to be screened from view. We're not approving any signs as part of this approval tonight. They have to come to us and get separate sign permits. They have to get a demolition permit prior to tearing the building down. And we always require that the, the applicant owner and his general contractors meet with us in a pre-construction meeting before we let them get started and before we let them start on the building or any site improvements. We meet, we go over everything, we talk about, you know, our working hours. We don't want them there at six in the morning waking up the neighborhood. We talk about keeping mud off the road and, you know, respecting the neighbors and making sure that we're all on the same page with what the plans are calling for.
Okay.
And I just wrote down a couple that we will have planning commission consider. We want to protect those existing buffer trees as, as to the maximum extent practicable. I think those trees are doing the job now.
Correct.
And also that yard drain. We want to maybe make that a condition that we work with you to have that little green drain there. We want that replaced so that it drains better.
That would be good.
So if we can add those two conditions and any other conditions that the planning commission feels is necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. I appreciate that. So I think our, our concerns are pretty simply gathered in two categories. One has to do with what you all would call the stormwater management or what I'm calling the water runoff. I think the engineer who presented did a nice job of talking you through the way the water works today on the property and the fact that there's what I think of as a wetland, but it was referred to as a, a rainfall pond or something like that.
Rain garden.
Rain garden. As was described, that's in bad condition right now. It's, it's not been kept up. It's on the, the commercial property, not on our property. And it doesn't, it, it overfills, and it, and it fills onto my drive. So the, and to your point, if we could, if we could take care of that, if that could be cleaned up and thinned out and so forth, and then we could expand that drain, we might be able to solve that problem together.
I'm surprised. I think that's worded in one of the conditions that I summarized.
Okay.
That's something that we will, we've talked, we've talked about them. That's part of what, part that they do is make sure that that is cleaned out and operating properly. We don't feel it's operating properly. That's why that water is, it's real wet right there.
So I think in keeping with the water runoff question or concept, the, the existing hill beyond that, that wetland area, which is down kind of at the corner of the property, should be the, like the lower left where the sharp point is on the diagram, there's also water that you can sort of see in this diagram. This is, this is a hillside here sloping down toward our drive. And our drive often has dirt all over it right here and into our, our grass area here because this is not well cared for today. This is an area that should be either grass grown or mulched, but it's just dirt and it's just running off. So I would like to ask the commission and impede, implore to the owner of the property to consider, you know, addressing that issue as well. Again, water runoff, there's water, but there's also dirt. And quite frankly, the existing trees, the root system, you know, isn't good because the, all the dirt or much of the dirt that's around the roots of the existing trees that are there, which are nice trees to your point, Ed, the root system is, is really failing because there's, on, on my side of those trees, the dirt's washed away. So I would ask the, the commission to consider that as, as part of the whole stormwater management. It's not just the draining to the lower left of this diagram. It's really the draining all the, all along the bottom green edge of this, this diagram.
Are those trees on your property?
No, sir. No, Ted. They're on the, they're on the other property. They belong to the other property, I believe.
I can point out, I'd like the, the notes on our landscaping plan stipulate that all of our site would be stable. So there needs to be any area that's dirt up, everything either will have grass, the grass growing, or it's gonna have landscaping, appropriate service needed, so you wouldn't have that problem. So on that side, we, we may have to make a field decision as to whether the big trees stay with the roots nurtled up like we are, or they come down and we grass everything and put new trees. Because we may not be able to have both, but I, we do have a commitment that when it's all done, the site will be stable. It has to be, it's noted on our landscaping plan.
That's why, you know, we want to work, protect the existing buffer trees to the maximum extent practicable. If there's a reason why some of those trees need to come out, we, we need to be able to do that.
We'll rely on the experts in the commission and the, the engineers and so forth, and Ed, to, to sort of address that. I think we can all get comfortable with the conversation we've had tonight on the water runoff. The, the second big category that we have as a concern, Jeff, is the, is the privacy. And so, you know, we've gotten accustomed to kind of cars coming and going, you know, on that property today with the daycare. And so, you know, there's little that we could say. We bought the home in that condition, right? We bought the home with daycare there. So we're, we acknowledge that there's parking lot there, there's, there's cars in and through there. And if it's less traffic anticipated, that's, that's great. I think what's, what's changing now is we're going from a, from a one-story structure that, by the way, because it's elevated, like I said, it's uphill from our house. It's a one-story structure today that really looks like a two-story to us because it's up high, higher than we are. Now we're going to a two-story building. And if we went, if we could pull up Mr., the architect's diagram, you'd see the balcony. That, that balcony on the top left, the south elevation, it's a second-story balcony that faces my home. My daughter's bedroom window faces that balcony. So from a privacy standpoint, you understand why I'd be concerned. You might be concerned if your 10-year-old daughter's bedroom faced that balcony. So that's a concern for me. It's a, it's a significant concern for me. And I would like to ask Mr. Wilding and Mr. McLean to consider addressing that and whether that balcony could be moved to another side of the building. And I would like to ask the commission to consider making that a requirement of the project moving forward.
That's what the landscaping buffer's for, is to help screen you that those trees grow and can provide you the buffer that you're seeking. You know, I think that balcony adds to the character of the building, so I don't know that we can mandate that they not do the balcony.
I'm asking them to consider that. I, I think it's, it's an appealing-looking building. I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just wondering why that building, why that second-floor balcony needs to face my home rather than the intersection with East McMurray and Bee Bow. So if I, if I had a stairwell with, as was mentioned, generous glass facing my home, I might be even more comfortable than someone, you know, again, basically having an observation deck which is two stories above my house, because we're already a story above where we're set. So it's, it's an, it's a request of the commission to consider it as a, as a requirement. And it's, it's, as a, as a good neighbor, it's a request of the, of Mr. Wilding and his group to consider adjusting the plans for that. That's all. That's all I have, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
So long.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else? Please, please go on. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Churney, and I'm the other adjacent property owner on 947 Bee Bow Road.
Okay.
So I was gonna wait. I'm here.
Okay. You're right here.
I'll echo. I probably would have had exactly almost the same presentation as Mr. Wood. We also experience a ton of water. I'm actually gonna leave, too. Back here on the site, right in this area, so much so that our yard is about 100% wet all of the time back there. So I think it's just thinking about what the gradient is here on that side. The tree health back there is something that I think might need to be addressed as well. We had two trees fall. One actually fell on our house from that property. But I know a little bit about tree health, and I think the three adjacent trees that are the largest mature ones there aren't actually that healthy, so they might not be salvageable. So, and I too have an issue with privacy. I guess I said we too. My husband's back there. For the same exact reasons. Right now, the property has a privacy fence on it. It's about six feet tall. My entire backside of my house is completely open to that if the screening is just an iron fence. And our daughter's bedroom is also on the same side as that, as our house. So we've been really worried about removing that privacy fence and adding in just some traditional screening because the building will look directly into the whole backside of our property.
And you're saying now there is a privacy fence?
There is a privacy fence on the property. We believe it's owned, as it stands currently, by the existing property. It's falling down. It's not in great condition. So even if the screening is put up and the fence is put up and there isn't an adjustment to the privacy, we will erect a privacy fence to ensure that we at least have that coverage back there.
I'll interrupt you just a second to point out that.
Can that change your?
That privacy fence in particular, it's not on our property. It's actually would be on your property then, so that's all.
That's good to know, because it's not, it's not oriented that way as it stands. It's built as if the privacy fence is for the business itself, so. But for the record, I agree. I'd like to think about adding some conditions around specific privacy related to the view. I know both our homes have a lot of windows. We have a mid-century modern, and our entire backside of our house is basically glass. So it'd be interesting to see a little bit more detail around what that screening would look like. So that's all I have for now.
Any other audience comments? Hi there.
I am Carolyn Harte. I live directly beside Hoy, so it's not shown on there, but it is the next house down on McMurray. There are, there is one thing about the water, first of all. We are getting water. I'm, I'm concerned that they, they said that there would be a 20% reduction in water drainage. Is that right with the current, with the proposed site?
No, the, the point that Mr. McGrino made was the ordinance requires that we look at 20% of the existing impervious area and consider that as metal and calculations. So it's not a, a reduction factor. It has to do with the background of the map. But to your, your. But to your point, yeah, the numbers are reduced. So 100%? No, 100%. What's runoff there right now, less will runoff after we're done because of the tanks that we've still to retain.
Why though, why would there be less if there's more asphalt? That would be less absorbent material. I would think that would be, that would make more runoff.
It does make more runoff, and that's why we have to put a system in that captures it and detains it. So that's why you'll see developments that you go and then pave a field for a dip or whatever. They wind up putting in some type of stormwater management. The most visible one you see is a stormwater management pond. Since we've developed some big ponds that hold back the stormwater. Most sites in high-value locations, especially if you put it underground, you don't have the area to put a big pond on this property or anything like that. So we put systems underground to do that.
Okay. My concern is that I hear, I know they've been having problems with water. I'm hearing that the folks on Bee Bow are having problems with water. As the next house down, we're having problems with water over the last three years. And I hear that that little, what we think of as a little wetland, a little rain-water garden thing, needs to be dug out and kind of reestablished. My concern, though, is that that will continue over time to fill up, and then the same thing will occur.
The first condition that we place on this new development is they have to sign a stormwater maintenance agreement with us. So that's an agreement that we have that's recorded. They are responsible to maintain that. We have our engineers go out and check it. If there's something not right about that facility, we contact them and they fix it. And as part of this whole initial project, they're going to go in there and clean that all out. We're going to see an improvement in stormwater management after this project is...
When do you think that will be? And I'll tell you why. Because their oak tree is ginormous magnificent tree. It is drenched in water all the time to the point where you can't even cut the grass under it. And now down in our yard, which is even lower, it's like a marshland so much of the time that it makes it difficult to cut our grass now. So how long will it take, you know, going forward to even see any kind of an improvement, let alone hopefully it will rectify the current situation? Like, when is this proposed?
My understanding that they're going to get started in the spring on this project, so sometime over the next spring, summer, we should see improvement. As the downstream property owners should see.
Are you the current owners now?
Yes.
Yes? Could something be done to that little marshland? Could you bring us a little bit of relief on the East McMurray side? The place that is the main, the main place that you're going to, the point down here on the pond on the left, on the bottom left? Can anything be done with it this fall? I mean, it is a total marshland. I mean, it's kind of...
But I think it's going to be best that it all be done as one big project so it all functions.
I see. The other thing is, do you really feel, do you feel comfortable that there is, that because there will be more asphalt and therefore more water, that the plans that they have will actually handle this so that we won't always be coming to see you, okay? So that we always won't be coming to see you?
It's our engineer's job to ensure that there's stormwater...
Because we don't want to do that. We want to leave these folks in peace too.
Yeah, absolutely. The Harsman Group has submitted plans and reports. Science seal will review those and finalize them. We provide comments to them. They're addressing them, so yes.
Okay. The short answer is yes. Okay. I'll remember your face, sir. Thank you.
I'll give you a card so you can remember my name.
Okay, your name.
And to that point, the calculations will have my name, my license, my seal. So you can remember my name.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. The other concern I had was the landscaping. And I'm speaking for, mostly for my neighbors' case, is that if they are trees, if they are shade trees, in the fall and all through the winter, they're not going to provide any bit of privacy whatsoever for these folks at all. Nothing. And they will be open. And these folks have a pool. And I'm addressing the balcony again. The balcony is just, if I were them, I would move away and I would not want to see my neighbors, my nice neighbors, move away because they have no privacy. I'm concerned still about what they were talking about earlier, which was the balcony on the south side, I guess, of McMurray that faces the Hoy's property. I mean, they can see not only into her bedroom, but they can see into the pool too. I'm not sure why the balcony has to be around that side. I mean, I think it's wonderful that it would be there for the employees and it looks nice, et cetera, but I just don't think it should come at the expense of their privacy and really their concerns for safety. As a mom, well, I'm a grandmom now, but I would be very concerned about who was working there and who could see my children. You know, are they really going to vet all their employees and their cleaning crew and make sure there's no criminals? You know, I mean, that seems like an awful expense for a business owner to have. And yet, it seems like too much of a worry to me if I were living there, and I'm only living one door down from it.
Okay. I'm not going to talk about the balcony. That's going to be...
Okay. We're talking about water?
We can add, we can work with the landscape architect and maybe add some evergreen hardwood ivies so it's more of a year-round screen.
I think, I would appreciate it if I lived next door to it instead of you on your down. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments?
Please come on.
Carolyn's husband, Bob. I just want to go back to the water issue just one more time. You said you're going to expand that grate to take more water?
That's what the task is to do.
The grate that's on the Hoy property.
Right. Okay. Again, I cut that grass, and I know it's near impossible for me to cut the grass. There's a pipe that runs under my property, down through the property next to mine, and all the way down to the creek. Okay? That's an eight-inch pipe that carries that water from all of their stuff through Hoy's down spots, through all that stuff. So now you're going to make, you're going to increase the size of that grate to carry more water down in there?
Not more water. The water that is being controlled and comes off of that site through a combination underground stormwater management facility, it's all not just pouring out, it's slowly being released out.
Okay. But somebody's taking a look at that pipe that runs all the way down through this property and said, yeah, this is going to manage it. Because right now, it's not.
For comparison, please come up, sir. I'd be glad to. I'm sorry. The size of the outlet hole, or you call it the last point of discharge to that pond from our side is four inches. So all of the runoff from the paving area that's coming out there will be released through a four-inch hole, which is a lot smaller than that eight-inch pipe receiving it. And that's what's there right now, is a four-inch hole. But we're in fact reducing even a mile or two to that. If that gives you some perspective of a four-inch diameter versus the eight-inch diameter receiving pipes. I thought that might be helpful.
It's helpful. All I want, all I know is I'd rather not be out there again another year trying to cut my grass. Because if you come down East McMurray and take a look, 724, 728, there's nothing but ruts in our yard because we can't manage, the water's not being managed. Okay?
Got it.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You want to come up and talk about the balcony, please?
Yeah, I can actually. The one point that I wanted to make on the balconies is, again, this is, we're saying, this is our south elevation here. And if we look at, if we can go back to the aerial view, the sightline, there's a perception, I understand, that this is a one-story building right now and we're going to have a two-story building. And that's true. But our two-story building is not in this location. We're not replacing that building with a new one. We're basically coming over here. We're much more along the edge of McMurray Road. So our building is here. So if we look at, you know, the home that's here, and I understand that, our balconies are actually here. They're designed for more of a perception of a view down McMurray Road. So we're out near the road and we're turned this way. You know, we're not looking from the point where the, where that existing building is. So I think, I hope that that helps. The perception here is that this balcony right here is not looking towards your home. It's looking out and away from it. We're looking here. Basically, there's the balcony right there, that outline right there. We're looking down the road that way. And those are, that's the second story, and those are the offices. That's a quiet spot in the building. It's not, it's not a main meeting area or a main conference room.
Does it, where would their house sit in relation to, is it way back there?
I believe it's here. See, how the grays changing, there's a flat spot here. I think that your home is here. And like I said, this is, this is much more related to the public roads.
What's the distance from the closest corner of the building to the far edge of the parking lot?
So obviously, like from here, say?
From there to the...
There. We have a little, I'm trying to think of, this is 24, 20 in the driving lanes, are we about 65?
Seventy.
So we're probably, yeah, every bit of that. We're counting the buffer, I think we're probably more like 85 or 90 even from this corner right here over to the property line. And again, we're landscaping...
And how tall is each story?
Probably in here, we have a 12-foot, four-inch, four, I think.
So a person would be standing eight, a person would be 18 feet off the ground. And those trees are like 20 feet or something like that in the end.
Right.
So you'll be looking pretty much at the trees because the trees are at the same elevation as the foot, as the bottom of the building. So really, those trees, once they, once they mature, if they're evergreens, that would be the ticket. And they would, they would mask the, they would screen the house pretty well.
Is that house a two-story? It's a two-story?
Our home's a three-story.
Does it make sense, in thinking about your analysis here and how the, I think it helps where the building sits, but to sort of stop the balcony from wrapping the whole way around?
Yes. To this side.
Yeah, so their side, basically just to stop instead of having it wrap the whole way around. So in a sense, what you're proposing is looking straight down McMurray Road rather into the backside of the building. So the balcony doesn't wrap around, it really just stops.
At the corner?
Yeah.
It's a pretty significant architectural piece of the building. Now, again, the, you think about the use of a balcony in an office condition like this, it is very, very... You know, from the inside, when you're in there and the last balcony actually kind of cuts your view off from the offices.
From the offices, I agree.
Right. So I, this one here is slender right there, and it's mostly, there's one conference room here, a small meeting that we have access out there. So I mean, bringing it around the corner is kind of perfect.
Okay. How about the other proposal, switch sides?
The switching sides really doesn't work for us. Again, we've got that wall here, we've got the mechanical equipment here, and that is the, if we think of the nature of this intersection, that's kind of the urban side of this. You know, that's, that's the corner, that's basically the corner there. So we wouldn't really be able to do what we're doing inside the building by switching everything over to that side.
Dave, I'd like to make a point too. So we've still got windows all the way around the second story as well, right?
That's right.
So is there a difference between looking out a window versus standing on a balcony? You've got the same view.
Right.
And it's, I mean, the building meets all of the zoning requirements of the town. So while I appreciate the coin, I don't know that there's much we can do to relieve the concerning site's plan.
I'll address your question. As a father, and there are a number of fathers in the room, Jeff, I'm just going to approach the podium for a few minutes. There's a number of fathers in the room. I would guess Mr. Wilding might even be a father living in the township. When people are on their breaks, and we all know, unfortunately, as fathers, our worst nightmare is a pervert working next door, living next door. When people are on their breaks, on an observation deck, 18, as Ted's estimate suggests, 18 feet above your swimming pool, your daughter's bedroom, it's a problem for a township resident. I think we can all understand that. It's different if somebody's sitting at their computer screen when they should be working. So yes, it's very different if they're on their breaks on their observation deck versus at their desk or in a conference room working. I spend a lot of my time in conference rooms, so I know this. I would, Jeff, I like your idea. I think your idea is a golden one. And I would ask that Mr. McLean and Mr. Wilding consider reorienting the observation deck so that it doesn't face my home. If there's someone standing at the far southeast side of this observation deck, you're looking directly into my swimming pool.
Dave, can I ask you a question? I'm...
Please come up, sir.
I'm Jim Wilding. I'm the co-owner of the firm. And I think, I could be wrong, Dave, isn't that end of the building, isn't that my office and Greg's office?
Yeah, that's...
So that balcony is my balcony, and it's Greg's, my partner's balcony.
So it's private, sir?
It's private to our offices. So the only people that are going to be out there on that balcony would be me or my partner, Greg Wymer. And one thing that might make you feel a little bit better too is we're not there, we're not there for anything other than to do our business. We're not there late in the evening. There's not going to be people hanging around on the balconies or anything like that. But on that balcony, the only way to get to it is through my office for Greg's office.
If that's true, and that's not what I observed from looking at the south elevation. South elevation, to me, if we could bring that up again, suggested that the balcony is a continuous balcony that wraps all the way around that side of the building. And it does, and I think it goes to the scale of the building. What you have right here is you've got Greg Wymer's office and Jim Wilding's office. And then this is a conference room, I say conference room, it's a meeting room that is only entered directly from Greg Wymer's office. And then on this side, you've got Jim Wilding's office with a conference room, a small meeting room that's adjacent immediately to his. So those are not, this is the conference room here for the building. And primarily, 90% of the client work in the building is on the first level. The offices are on the...
Very quickly, Jeff, I like your idea. And if that wouldn't be considered by the gentleman, I would ask that the commission and Ed consider requiring that it be evergreen trees. I like, I like your suggestion on that, Ted, or whomever brought that up. I also like the idea of there being a privacy fence required between the property and my property. So I'm open to ideas. I want to be a good neighbor as we have a new neighbor coming into the neighborhood. But as any good father would, I have to stand up here and voice my concerns to the commission, and I appreciate you entertaining them.
Thank you.
I have one small follow-up too. I'll add to that. But I think it could be helpful if we could request maybe a perspective view from the balcony, just some sightlines on what we might expect to see out of the windows. I think that'd be helpful too because even if we deal with this issue, the other backside of the property is completely facing our open, our open views. So it'd be nice if we could see a perspective of, at scale, what might be seen outside of the window. I think that would help sort of calm some of the fears on that.
They'd have to go on to that.
Okay. Thank you.
We are, you are providing the requisite buffers between the two different uses though, as required by code.
That's correct.
And the, a privacy fence is only going to be so high that it may not alleviate your direct concern about a balcony overlooking into a home or because of the elevation of the balcony. So I don't know that that's going to fix that particularly few questions. And I am encouraged that this is accessible by private offices, which I don't pretend those business were financial from. I assume those are relatively controlled. And I don't know that quite can allow the purview of this report to...
Can we see the internal...
To adjust.
Sorry, we weren't, we weren't able to see the internal plans tonight.
You can come in.
What's the depth of the balcony?
You can stop. It is about, you can see right here, this is about, say, five feet or so, five or six feet, and it comes along here. And then at this spot out here, when we get out toward McMurray Road, it comes out a bit more. So it's deeper here and it stays narrow with that.
So it's more decorative than functional? It's not like you're going to have office permits on the balcony. You can, I'm going to try to off and go roll out.
So the interior there, it's a little more...
Yeah, so this is, this is the, like we're saying, Greg Wymer office, this is the Jim Wilding office, this is a conference room that's dedicated to Mr. Wymer. This is a conference room in the sun that belongs to Jim Wilding. This, this whole space right here from this spot over here is their domain. So we take, like, like I say, the client work is primarily on the first level. So, we take, like, like I say, the client work is primarily on the first level. When you get to the top, this third of the second floor of the building is for those two principals. Mr. McLean, the left of the stairs is the executive suite? That's correct. And the center conference room between the two partners' offices, those doors that show to the outside, to your... What are those doors, sir? Those go from that, that meeting room to the balcony out here. So, this is the profile of the balcony right here. That's the balcony right there. And that area is controlled by the principals of the business? That's right, yes.
So, Ed, let me ask a question before we get too far here. We, as a planning commission, are limited on telling them where they can put their balcony. Absolutely. We're getting... So, this is simply up to a decision between the owner, please understand that this board has limited powers. This is a permitted use in this location. As long as they do everything within our code, we're limited on what we can require the developer to do. So, as a good neighbor, maybe the developer's willing to work with you outside of this board, but we have limitations. Just letting you know. Okay. Thank you. So, Ed, what kind of additional recommendations do you have?
13, 14, 15, protect the existing buffer trees to the maximum extent practicable. 13, the yard drain on the adjoining property to the east be replaced. In the buffer be a combination evergreen deciduous tree buffer.
Okay. Any other commissioner thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I take a motion that the planning commission approved the site plan for the Confluence Financial Partners with the original 12 conditions and the additional three conditions that were stated by Ed's now.
One second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Any other items? Yeah. Meeting adjourned.